All right, you were good to go.
Okay, give me one second. Package. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
I opened up the wrong one. Okay, I'm gonna use your screenshot. Got it. Okay, I like to call to address, I like to call to order at, I'm in a different time zone, so it's six oh three. PM, Airway Heights Commissioners. It is muted. Oh my god, sorry guys, I'm having a little problem here. He thinks I'm driving, shit.
Hey, by the way, Cal, this is a test.
Well, it's a bad test because it's telling me I'm driving right now and I'm not driving. You, I know, okay, I'm back now, can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I'd like to call to order at six oh four, Airway Heights Commissioners Meeting. February. Where's my package?
I'll tell you what, Cal.
I'm having a difficult time.
Today's, today's, I'll help you out, it's February ninth.
Okay, February nine, two thousand twenty-two. Oh, let me get once, okay, I like to call the role. Of Cal Patel, President, Commissioner Mark Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Angelina has requested an absence. Commissioner Hank.
Present.
Commissioner Stephanie.
Present.
All in favor to excuse Angelina tonight? Say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move to the next item, and that will be the pledge of alliances, are we gonna do this, Zach, you gonna? Play the recording, or?
Uh, I will just have somebody, uh, somebody be the lead on it, that's what we've been doing the last couple of months, so.
I'll take the lead, I've been now at the past two meetings.
There you go.
All right, thank you, Mark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag.
Republic for which it stands.
Stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Oh. There is not a great day. I would like to have somebody give me a motion for approval for tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the approval of tonight's agenda.
Anybody wanna second it?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also would like to, does anybody have any, I would like to move to the next item is last, last month's minutes, does anybody have any? Discussions or anything they wanna go over before we ask for a motion? If nobody has any comments or anything, let, can somebody give me a motion for that approval of last month's minutes? January twelfth?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we don't have any, any public comments tonight, I don't think we have any presentations, uh, we don't have any? Public hearings scheduled, the next item we have is action items.
Cal, we do have a significant chunk of the public here tonight, you might wanna just check and see if there are any public comments not relating to any item on the agenda.
Or just, okay, I apologize that, I'm gonna go back to public comments, and I would like to open up the meeting to the public if Zach can monitor. And, uh, and let people in as they need to come, because I'm on a cellphone and I cannot see the list of the people.
Okay, uh, I will unmute you momentarily, uh, and if you have a comment, please let us know, if not, please let us know. Um, again, there are several other items on the agenda, if you have comments regarding those, we may have time for those later, so, Darla.
I have nothing to say at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, it's just moving around a bit, Jamie.
Yeah, I was just wondering what these public comments were for, it's just.
Uh, it's just anything and anything, it's.
Anything general. Besides the what items we're gonna carry, color tonight.
I guess I can, I'll hold till later, I guess.
Okay. EA tell us, I believe that's Elizabeth, tell us, we'll give you an option.
We are anymore, anybody else who wants to say or speak up?
Thanks, guys.
Not, if not, we'll close it and move.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, if anyone has any comments, we can circle back around, just let me know in the chat, please.
Okay, so we will, we'll go straight to the action items, uh, two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan. And I would like staff to take over and do the presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair and Commission members, so tonight, we're going to be going over some land use alternatives. If you recall, we've been workshopping. Land use alternatives since last fall with the Plan Commission, the goal here was to look at some alternatives. For potential residential growth, uh, previous reports from our consultant framework, pardon that, I just gave you my calendar. Uh, indicated that our greatest need for looking at a updated comprehensive plan would be related to residential use. And they did some analysis, which we've shared with the Plan Commission. Uh, calculating our population that we received as part of the periodic updates, so just to recap, every community within a county. And works on a projection of the amount of population that we will receive over a twenty-year period. We are undertaking this comprehensive plan because Airway Heights has been experiencing high growth in population. And, and we have also found out for consultants' work looking at our available land that we have also consumed. A, a large amount of residential as well as some amounts of commercial industrial land since our last comprehensive plan was adopted. These land use alternatives are looking at a range of possibilities, uh, which included. Three alternatives, and I'll just recap those very quickly, uh, for the audience, and these have been available. Uh, for some time since January on our project website, which we put up last fall. And that includes, uh. Alternative one, which I'll bring up here on the screen very quickly, um, it is described as a steady growth alternative, so it includes. Applications and plans that were proposed from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, so. For example, in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, there was a request to redesignate the areas B one, B two, B three, and B four. From low density residential and commercial to medium density residential. Uh, we also adopted the downtown plan last year. Which proposed to increase density north of a proposed downtown area along US two, the high density residential. Uh, we also have an application that was submitted by the Kalispel Tribe in twenty eighteen, that's still in process, which is property E. That proposes to go from commercial with a mixed use overlay to high density residential. Uh, as well as looking at some of the assumptions that were in the last comprehensive plan that was adopted with regards to our mixed use zone. Which goes along US two, that mixed use zones, uh, have been identified in our last comprehensive plan as potentially a thirty percent mix. Of residential office and commercial, uh, we have not seen any applications for mixed use in this area, and so the. Consultant is recommending that for this updated plan, we lower that assumption, uh, to about ten percent. And this total area potentially could be mixed use, and it could be lower than that as well. Uh, so that was alternative one, alternative two, looked at a combination of both looking inside the city limits to. Uh, redesignate non-residential to residential land, uh, for purposes of being able to meet. Our population and housing projections, and these are all alternatives, uh, they also looked at a topic which has been. Being discussed with the city council in particular for over a year now, which is potentially taking an area in the existing. Adopted comprehensive plan for both the city and Spokane County. For a piece of property identified as F that contains the current county off-road vehicle park of about a hundred and eighty acres, potentially exchanging or using the word swap. For other areas outside of the current city, um, that potentially Airway Heights could grow into in the future. Um, and so there were a couple of options presented, which included F one, uh, which is adjacent to the city limit boundary, um, on the center of this image. Uh, which would be north of, uh, two current growth areas. Or F two, which is again adjacent to the city limits along Craig Road. For consideration. Uh, the reasons were to change the zoning adjacent to Dino Road from industrial to medium density residential. And some properties adjacent to Craig Road from industrial to medium density residential, and both of these sites are currently within the city limits. So, uh, alternative carries forward, the applications or plans that were adopted by the city carries them forwards for consideration. Of residential development opportunities as well as give some options. Uh, for exchanges of a UGA and increasing residential zoning within the city. And then finally, we had alternative three, which again carried forward, alternative one and alternative two, but it provided two additional. Areas for consideration for that exchange or swap for the county off-road vehicle park. And both of those are located on the east side of Hayford Road, and those were identified as I and J. On the maps, so, uh, after workshopping with the Plan Commission and City Council about recommendations of which properties to include. Uh, what properties to exclude, this went out for public engagement process, our. Pope Relations Firm, Big Sky, uh, inserted into the public engagement campaign, so there was Facebook posts that were paid, uh, Facebook pushes for this information. As well as flyers were handed out, and we also sent this out through our MailChimp account, uh, which we have emails from a variety of businesses, utility account owners. Uh, people who are members, for example, of our Recreation Center, and business licenses, uh. So that they were aware of this, uh. Document, its availability on our project website, and encourage people to come in and comment about those alternatives, and so tonight, we. We have comments to share, and then I will also note that, uh, we also as a courtesy sent notices to any property owners. That had proposed changes represented on these three maps, so that they were also aware. That the city was looking at these properties for potential land use change in the future, and they would have an opportunity to provide comment or participate. Uh, for example, in future meetings, I believe some of their representatives are here tonight, and, uh, we would. You know, certainly if there was a preferred alternative that included them, uh, give them notice again so that they could continue to follow and be engaged in this process. So, uh, on the website that we had, it allowed for people to actually drop comments directly into this document, which gave the background. About the land use, the map, the zoning that we had, uh, information about what was happening with the consumption of vacant lands, et cetera. And we received, uh, back some comments which were in this report, this was forwarded to the Plan Commission, uh, this afternoon by Zach, so each of you have this as well. So, um, comment number one was, uh, I think actually related to comment number two by Charlotte, she was looking for a legend for the maps, and indicated she actually found it. Um, there were some comments posted with regards to clarity with, uh, the hatched area, the hatched area on those maps represented urban growth areas. Within the existing city limit. Um, and I'll just pop down to those maps, you can see with the hatched lines, uh, that that was actually the key. But it looks like we did not include it in the key, so I think that probably that was a clarity that we probably should have put in there, um, here, this is our, yes, it is, it's under urban growth area in the key. Um, so each of the maps did clearly indicate that we had an urban growth area, and that's with this area south of US two, and of course. Uh, the areas north on the city side of the west side of the city indicated. And hopefully I'm not making anybody sick by passing forward back through the document real quickly. Uh, let's see, um. There were some questions, kind of technical questions in here, uh, a little bit beyond the scope of, of the map, having to do with things like building height. Um, a description of what is, um. What is mixed use, we did include some density ranges in this document, which were carried forward from our. Previous comprehensive plans, and just a reminder, low density residential is up to five units per acre. Medium density residential is up to ten units per acre, and high density residential is ten to twenty. Um, there are areas in our core area that are allowed for mixed use, those would be able to be ten to twenty units per acre. But we did, of course, propose a lowering of the assumption of how much. Would actually be realized in no small part, because that area that could have mixed use is part of our. Overlay zone that was adopted by Airway Heights for compatibility with Fairchild Air Force Base. And those regulations called J-List indicate that mixed use development would be able to occur on a case-by-case evaluation and a demonstration of community need, so. It's not, it's not a, a by right, uh, provision within Arizona code for mixed use, it actually requires a conditional use permit and occurring as well as demonstration of community need. Uh, let's see, there were some recommendation that, uh, there not be isolation, uh, between high density uses. Um, and I'll just note here that because of J-List and the overlay zones for base compatibility, we are not proposing any residential south in the US two. And we would, uh, not do so because that's considered an area contextually that has sensitivity to development, uh, because of Fairchild. And of course, everybody's heard of the accident potential zones that are south of the US two, they're at the end of the runway for Fairchild. Um, we also received several comments, uh, from a Jim Frank, uh, which is also again asking us to consider a mixed use zone, so this is probably just a clarity we may wanna add. To, um, our text and map, that we do have a mixed use zone, they are, um. Allowable to have, again, multi-family above an office or commercial as part of our current mixed use zone, but there are some. Recommendations here, uh, which includes that we should change our density ranges, so. For example, low density residential is up to five, in this case, Jim Frank is recommending that our low density, uh, be moved up to ten units per acre. With the provision to allow townhome or reprow houses in that area, uh, with, uh, smaller lots that would be. Provided, and that medium density would be ten to twenty, uh, rather than our high density. And that we should go up to forty units per acre, uh, for our high density, which is currently ten to twenty. Let's see, um. Couple more comments here, um, there was support for incorporating in all three alternatives. The proposed high density residential north of the downtown area, is a reminder that was already adopted in our downtown plan, which was adopted as. A part of our comprehensive plan, and, uh. There was a lot of support in the comments, we also received a, a comment, uh, with regards to, um. The off-road vehicle park, which is in the UGA, uh, so Nikki Sharf had indicated that, um. They recommended that a better use of the county off-road vehicle park, which is still technically in the county, but within both Spokane County and Airway Heights UGA, that. Um, it should change uses and potentially become residentially available or, or available for residential development. Uh, some additional comments here, um. There was a question of whether or not the properties that are identified as I and J, an alternative. Three, uh, would share identity with Airway Heights, um, and that has to do with Hayford Road more south. Separating those, and what type of development occur there in the future? Uh, and whether or not it would be connected specifically to Airway Heights, um. The Mr. Scott Wills indicated that, um. They were concerned about a road through the asphalt plant, and so this has to do with alternative three as well. Uh, which identifies a potential connection to Hayford Road, um, for one of those alternatives. So those are, um, they convey, uh, comments that we got directly onto. Uh, this document, and we did receive, uh, you know, a few comments, uh, with regards to, through the website on the alternatives. Were probably not enough to, um, be statistically significant, and so at this point, I'll just draw your attention that we did receive letters from. Uh, representatives of three of the properties that were provided to the Plan Commission, uh, so the first letter, uh, is for. Ownership that's over on the west side of the city, uh, it's in a family trust, they're currently using it for agricultural purposes. Uh, the family's desirous of, of remaining, um, a rural, uh, type of land use in the future, would like for rural, uh, continue to surround that property. They did have some technical questions about whether or not, um, an urban growth area could be exchanged, I did refer. Them to our, our representative with the Department of Commerce, and I did speak with him today, he confirmed that he did respond to their attorney and did confirm. Um, that the agreement between Spokane County that includes the Department of Commerce does. Um, allow or discuss a swap of urban growth area. The, uh, second letter had to do with representation of property owner on a proposed reason adjacent to Dino Road, just west of our current Recreation Center, which was. Proposed to go from, uh, industrial to residential, um, and the recommendation there representing the property was not to redesignate that piece of property, the owners. Are operating mineral facilities and would like to continue, uh, that in the future for their ownership. Uh, they also provided comments with regards to, um, if the UGA for the off-road vehicle park was removed and. Alternatives, uh, F one, uh, was pursued, would it create a donut, uh, within? The UGA area, I'm, I'm not aware that there's any violation of growth management as a result of that, but that's something we can certainly. Pursue, uh, with our representative with Department of Commerce, and then the third comment, uh, letter that we received were representing the Union Oswald. Families, which are, um. Uh, an ownership that is again on the east side in alternative three. And, uh, the alternative that we brought forward for the public to review based on, um, the Plan Commission and the City Council's interest in continuing to. Have that property out there for consideration, uh. Moved the potential hundred maybe acres further north than the application that the Union Oswald fairly made. To Spokane County back in twenty twenty, and I'll just note that that application is still pending, it's been held over, uh, for. Some required studies to analyze the ability to serve that area as a UGA. Uh, the reason why that area in our proposal was moved slightly north. Is to exclude area that would not allow residential development under Airway Heights. Regulations which include a Fairchild Air Force Base overlay called J-List that we have. As well as the properties that were in the Spokane International Airport. B C Z five, which is a, uh, safety area for the proposed third runway for, uh, Spokane National Airport, and. The focus here has been always about finding some residential land in order to accommodate our projection of population and housing. Um, our consultant in frameworks had also done an analysis indicating that the city's Airway Heights, um. Likely had sufficient industrial and commercial land, and so, um, that is why this proposal is different than the application to the county. Um, a UGA area would be required to be continuous to a city corporate limit. Um, which is why there's a conceptual connection to Hayford Road, which also is where, um. We have facilities as the city of Airway Heights, you know, so we, we manage and maintain, for example, Hayford Road. Along that, that segment. Uh, so the, the property owners in that case are not supportive of the proposed modifications to exclude their industrial and commercial portion. Um, that they have an application for, and I should just put a note, um, for the Plan Commission, because this was asked of, of, um. During a meeting with the attorney for the property owners, the city, um. Is moving forward because it has the legislative ability to do so, to modify its comprehensive plan. And to consider alternatives as part of that in an application to another agency. Uh, which does include, uh, a joint planning area for Airway Heights, does not prevent the city from considering alternatives as part of this process, so. Just to, um, let you know that you can consider alternatives, but, you know, clearly because of our workshops, there's been interest in. Seeing how the public was, um, look at that area and see if it would move forward for, uh, consideration. So, um, I'm gonna pause there for a few minutes to see if the Plan Commission has some. Questions about the comments we've received, or any technical questions about the alternatives, or if you would like me to go back through any elements of the alternatives.
Uh, this is Cal, I just wanna, I know you've probably covered this item already, but just for clarification, uh, we had, I think about. Three people that, um, sending the letters, objecting to the changes, I guess, right, was it two or three?
There were three letters that we received.
So if we go through with the, with the changes, and, uh, we can consider their properties to be considered on each, each. Each case by case, or we have to do the whole thing, uh, and just move forward?
That's a really good, um, question, the goal for tonight is to, um, take action. To recommend that we move forward with a preferred alternative. And there are three of them, and there is the possibility of modifying. These alternatives as well, so for example, if, if the Plan Commission wanted to remove one of the properties. From consideration in one of the alternatives, you could do so, um, as part of your action tonight.
Okay, that's, that's not, that's good, thank you.
And I just wanted to remind, um, the Plan Commission, those that are here, the goal is to develop. A concept to move forward to help us develop the rest of the comprehensive plan, so this is, this is not the only. A concept to move forward to help us develop the rest of the comprehensive plan. So this is this is not the only opportunity to be engaged. In the development of the plan um as we do the work, but we as the city. Need to have a base understanding of the land use changes because we will then subsequently. Work with our consultants on capital facilities, utilities and transportation. To identify what would be required to serve these areas because that's a requirement of. Growth management and and can we planning policies that 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 speak to how you amend your plan. To demonstrate that we will be able to serve this area in the future. Um and it's very important that we we get a fairly firm idea of what these. These recommendations are because it would be um time consuming and expensive for us later. Or might even not even possible to to change this later, but it will um allow us to at least study it. And be able to determine if we need to, before we reach a preliminary draft of the whole plan. Making other recommended changes because remember under wealth management. Um we have to tie land use to our ability to serve with urban services that includes fire, police and waters here. Uh etc.
Heather, I had a question, um. I seem to recall when I read through the comments, um many of which you already covered. There was one in particular comment that was of interest to me where I believe the guy's name was Scott Wilm's or something like that. He said, how do you assume that you can run a road through our, right through the middle of our asphalt plant? What was that all about? You remember that?
Yeah.
Number seven.
Yeah, that's um comment number.
Oh, sorry, correction.
Number nine.
Number nine, okay.
And that is, the pen on that's dropped right here. So this is having to do with that Union Oswald property. Remember, we need to, because the plan commission city council wanted to move it forward and yet. We are only looking for residential. One alternative was to consider um of some type of connection that was proposed. That would go actually east or west and it would connect with an existing roadway, so it would make sense for purposes of alignment. Um here to Hafer Road. So um there is. Um several pieces of property north and through this area that are owned. Uh by a mineral and aggregate company, Shamrock, I believe is is their corporate name. So they could be referring to whether or not um there'd be willingness of part of the property owner to participate um in an urban growth area. Uh swap that would allow a connection to Hafer Road and again. The recommendation here is because this is where we we actually have control of the roadway Hafer Road. We have services along the road here. Uh whereas the county application that was submitted by the Union Oswald family proposed also a narrow neck connection. Uh going down to twelfth avenues. Which is about in this area of the drawing, so I don't know if if this person represents or works with Shamrock uh or not.
Have there, is there something associated with that property with the school, if I'm remembering correctly as well?
Yes, uh their superintendent has indicated that they. Have entered into an option to purchase some property by the of the unions. If this piece of property uh was included in an urban growth area, it's my understanding, the superintendent also indicated. That they have options on several pieces of property around Airway Heights. Uh this is a long standing conversation. Over several years, including some demographic studies that have been prepared by the school district indicating. That a high school would be needed. There's been certainly communication on the part of Airway Heights City Council advocating to the. Chief School District that that high school should be located somewhere in proximity to Airway Heights. Because of our population and potentially how much of our population would constitute a future student population. Um so the answer is is my understanding is yes, they have an option. Uh so the superintendent has also indicated that they have options in other properties around this area as well.
Thank you.
Um and I'll just say that that came straight from the superintendent during a uh West Plains meeting. That I attended actually back in, I believe, in the beginning of December.
Heather, I have one last question. Will our moving forward invite any sort of litigation? Do you think? You know, I'm.
Certainly. Go ahead.
Well, the reason I'm asking is simply, you know, because of the letters that. You received from Randall Danskin and Winston Cash at those two law firms. I I'm just wondering, you know, um I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you, do you think that. Our moving forward would invite that sort of, any kind of litigation?
Um I guess Hank, my question would be, what would, what would somebody be um, you know, pursuing litigation for? I mean, this is a. A draft alternative to be studied, um. You know, so I I guess that would be a question and we, I can certainly forward that, you know, to our own legal counsel, but I'm. I'm not sure what um working on an alternative that then becomes the basis for more homework to study. You know, the issue of whether or not we could, you know, serve this for a proposed comp plan. I would say. You know, once a decision's made, which would be the adoption of a comprehensive plan. There certainly are appeal rights uh with regards to somebody. Um challenging whether or not this was consistent with the requirements of growth management. Um and that's what the the growth transport is specifically for is, you know, hearing those types of challenges.
I appreciate that. I I was just curious, you know, I didn't have anything in particular in mind. I was just kind of curious if. You know, there was a potential out there for some sort of litigation. In the event that, you know, we elect to move forward, is that gonna rub somebody the wrong way or, you know? I wasn't sure.
Sure, and I'm not an attorney, as you know, Hank, um but you know, they have, there has to be some some action. Um as I understand, um for, you know, most types of appeals, you know, certainly, you know, civil litigation is completely separate. Uh but um at this point, this is the goal as a recommendation, which by the way. Um will be forwarded to recommendations to city council. Um for them uh to see this and um for them to. Uh you know, potentially confirm your recommendation, make changes to that recommendation and the goal is to is to create a land use. Alternative that we can then study further and, you know, we may end up coming back with additional changes. In what we hope will be April uh based on the results of that analysis, because if we have these requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
My comments would be that uh to move this forward would be advantage to the city since we are experiencing growth. And and planning is an important factor of that, so tonight us commissioners can agree on something. It would be nice. But if somebody is strictly against it, I I would like them to voice that tonight.
Well, um that's a really good point, uh Cal, which is, you know. Wanted to make sure we answered any questions that the plan commission had, but we do have a couple of members from the public that are here and while this is not a hearing. We certainly would encourage the plan commission to consider um hearing comments or feedback from the public that may be here today. And if they've taken the time to attend and it may be helpful to the plan commission.
I'd like to do that once uh all the commissioners and the staff have finished the discussion so that we can leave that time. For the public to make a comment. So if uh any commissioners have any further comments, Mark, Hank, Stephanie?
No.
If you don't, then Zach, I would like you to mediate and open up. Particular comprehensive plan and I would like to advise the public, please keep it. To to about about five minutes or less if you can. Uh and everybody's comments would be appreciated, so if Zach can moderate that for me, I would appreciate that.
Sure, uh so if you have any comments, please let me know in the chat. And we can go uh first come first served here. Thanks, Kevin. No comments from Kevin, but we'll give a minute here to let people. Uh Ken Johnson would like to make a comment. I will ask you to unmute.
Mister Johnson? Yes, thank you very much. Uh I'd like to make the comment on uh your. Uh different uh options. Um I think uh the only perspective that I'd like to share, I'm uh fire chief of Spokane County Fire District ten. And I'm a firm believer of organized growth and I love what you guys are doing. Uh you're you're talking about it, you're thinking about it. Um you know, utilizing studies to make sure that you're making the right decisions. Uh some of uh my perspective would be uh with you guys spreading out so much, I think you're out of. Your community is at a point where a second station is uh probably and uh needed. Uh as well as you're, you guys are um looking at um a call volume as such that warrants uh a second engine company. So um potentially looking at um public safety, uh that's something that. Uh in this plan, you're not getting that perspective and um that's something that you guys are. You know, probably aware of. I'm sure Mitch is doing a good job talking with you guys, telling about his needs and I I support. Uh you guys, your guys' efforts and and you know, just from my perspective. Um there's definitely some needs on the public safety, so thank you for uh giving, giving me a chance to have some input. And uh I appreciate all your guys' hard work. There's a lot of effort going on in the background, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Johnson, uh for your comments, uh. Uh if I'm wrong or correct me, Heather, I think we have already addressed the safety issue. Uh about six months ago and the council was looking into uh the safety issue concerned or connected to the growth.
That's correct, and that's going to wrap up by being included in the capital facility chapter. Of this comp plan. Um so a little background, the plan commission. Uh was concerned about the growth uh occurring in the city and how it might be impacting our public safety, fire, police and courts. And so the city is uh going through a process with consultants identifying short term. Needs and capital costs associated with that and what it would require in order to fund those, so um. They're diligently working with that consultant and the information as it impacts our capital facility plan and. Area served will be part of this and that's another reason why we we have preferred alternatives so that. Um those agencies will be able to see if there are changes in land use or density and they can examine the impact on their. Their uh equipment, their staffing and as Mister Johnson indicated, you know, whether or not there's. Uh additional facilities need to be built in order to accommodate the growth.
Thank you, Heather. The next person, Zach.
All right, looks like Jack.
Jack?
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the the opportunity to comment here. Um I've represented the. Oswald Ewing family for the last three years and it was at the behest of the city of Airway Heights and. And an invitation from Albert Tripp to try to accomplish some type of a UGA swap. For the ORB park over to their property on Flint Road. And we've uh we've spent uh a lot of time. We've had engineers involved in in trying to accomplish this and through that process, we've also been involved uh pretty heavily with the Cheney School District. And they have identified of between seventy and a hundred acres that they would like to acquire for a new high school and a new. Middle school at the north end of of the proposal we provided. Uh the proposal was initially scrutinized by. Fairchild Air Force Base, Department of Transportation, uh the airport and so forth. And we modified that application so that we took everything out of the ACC five. Area and outside of of any sound contours that would have impacted residential development. So what we ended up with was approximately forty-five acres. Of uh light industrial zone property and a hundred and thirty-five acres of residential zone property. And I I'm not quite sure how to respond to the Cheney School District. We're supposed to have an agreement finalized with them very shortly. And the access and the traffic issues that need to be met can be met. When we made this application, it was based upon trading uh ten acre. Minimum density zoning from the ORV park to the Oswald Ewing property. And so there was no impact. There was no impact on on uh utilities or traffic or anything. However, according to the uh. The settlement agreement between Spokane County and Futurewise in the state. Uh they require a capital facilities plan that's really detailed and and to this day, I really don't have an exact. Reconciliation of what that means. So we're working forward with it. Our engineer, uh Frank Hyde with Parametrics. His wife died, he remarried, he retired and moved to Boise and so I've. I've engaged Taylor Engineering. They're working on those studies right now. I've been in contact. Regularly with Spokane County uh to try to move this whole thing forward and that application is still pending. So to just kind of kick it to the curb and ignore it doesn't make any sense to me. So I I would implore you to look back at that and look at that as a. Foundation for whatever decision you make because that's uh that's been a joint effort amongst all of. The jurisdictions for quite a long time and like you say, it's been a lot of time and money spent to accomplish that. By the property owners and we're trying to just move this thing forward and get it done. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Jack.
Are you, are you familiar with that plan? I I I know I presented it to all of you previously.
You did.
Yeah, so I'm hopeful that you'll recognize that and recognize that effort and. Let's get that thing, uh let's take that thing home.
Thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you.
Appreciate taking your time and giving us your comments.
Absolutely.
All right, next is Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie.
Hi, Cal. Thank you. Um hey, Zach, hey, Heather. Um I just had a couple of questions, um. And just for perspective, probably for some of the, some people here. Um in regards to Jim Frank's comments, the city of Airway Heights density requirements for low, medium and high. Versus maybe what the county is and forty per acre, what does that look like?
New York City, probably.
Um forty minutes per acre would would probably look a little bit more similar to um. Some of the new urban development occurring over in uh like Kirkland or Redmond. I have that link to the. Website that we presented at the last plan commission that showed some examples of missing metal housing. And uh what kind of uh density it would require. I can pull it up very quickly. Uh let's see here.
You may not have to pull that up. I was just wanting you to maybe explain like your. Um density versus the county, the city of Airway Heights and then. Yeah.
Certainly, let me just pull this up real quick, um.
Okay.
This is a an example off of a website um called missingmiddle.com. And this actually actually happens to be mixed use, which is what is similar to um some of Jim Frank's comments. And these visual examples are are only to um a net density of less than thirty units per acre um each of these images that we see here. So you can kind of give a I get a little bit of a feel for what what forty units make per acre maybe?
Yes.
Um based on that? Okay, good. Uh so the densities that that Airway Heights arrived at were likely based on historic patterns of existing subdivisions and likely a policy discussion about continuing to include that type of density, particularly the low density based on existing development patterns. Uh Spokane County has done something similar in their comprehensive plan, though recently they looked at increasing the density slightly higher than Airway Heights because of a legislative change that provided in a grants incentive some slightly higher density. Um and I believe that was in Grove Substitute House Hospital nineteen twenty-three and I and I thought that one of the options was to increase density to at least sixteen minutes per acre. I would have to actually look at Spokane County's um to see if they pursued that grant and utilize that um for their density. But that's a little bit of a background on why we look at the communities in Spokane County. So the city Spokane, so you have the valley, city of Worry Lake, Airway Heights, and then the unincorporated county. They they do base them a bit apart on their historic pattern and development. And then as an additional layer, there are some real clear guidance that communities have perceived about what is rural versus what is urban intensity. And there is a requirement for incorporated cities to have urban densities uh within their corporate boundaries. So that gives a little bit of the background, hopefully, and um hopefully the answer to your question. But if there's a specific category you wanted us to compare, you know, let me know, Jamie.
No, not necessarily. I just, I mean, I I think that it's interesting to see that there's different um regulations or or things for different municipalities. And that's it just interesting to look at. Um so one of the frustrating things that looking at your comprehensive plan is that um you guys don't show the overlay of where we have the noise contours. So it doesn't give like this audience that perspective of you know, why we might be upset about certain things or you know, why we would want to fight different things with um what you propose. And so I know that we had talked um or you know, Jeff and I and we had all talked about this particular um these alternatives, but I didn't hear that as part of the public comments. And so I guess I'm 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 wondering when this forum gets to hear those issues that um we maybe had during those conversations or if I need to be more proactive and this might be it, Heather. And I know you're gonna tell me I'm wrong. Um that I should be writing you a letter and sending you that in a letter format. And um because we don't do that, they're not heard.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up a map. Um
Don't we have the contours there on the north side?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up a map and show you our current comprehensive plan. This is available on our city website, which shows the contours uh that Jimmy Kolski is referring to. Um and so if everybody can see this map, this is showing the accident potential zones, this is showing the Spokane National Airport safety uh zone and I'm going to we might have to zoom in here a little bit. And move your faces aside so I can look at my key here. Um so both of our land use map and our zoning map online, which is our currently adopted comp plan and our zoning code shows the um sound contours for the um there we go, for the Fairchild Air Force Base safety. So um what uh is being referred to, I'll zoom out just a little bit so you can see it a little bit more clearly, is the city of Airway Heights adopted um these contours, which are more than just representative of sound. They actually come along with overlay zones that have restrictive land use. And so because this is an actual document for policy for people looking at, you know, is my property designated based on the adopted comprehensive plan? Can I change my land use? And consequently, they can also look at the zoning code and see whether or not an overlay in fact impacts their property for purposes of looking at the zoning code. They can get the that utility today um from from these maps. Um what I believe Jamie is referring to is in the public version of these alternatives that went out. Um because of how much information was on these maps, we were trying to make it simple, visually simple for the public to look at the alternatives, the background analysis of whether or not these properties were in the sand contours or not um was done by our consultants. And so that is why they're not on these maps um because they're not helping the public um necessarily with the sense of it's just another layer here. But but the properties that we included, we identified as as being compliant. And so two things happened, um Jamie. One was at last month's meeting. Um there was an memo prepared presented to the planning commission that went through each piece of property and identified that they were would outside of the city of Airway Heights adopted nineteen ninety-five contours. So these properties are outside of the sixty-five. And then the follow-up meeting with Fairchild Air Force Base in Spokane County, we discussed that um Spokane County has adopted a different data set. So um applying Spokane County's overlay zones in to the city of Airway Heights. Um my understanding was all parties agree that 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 was not the intent. Um but that certainly the larger conversation that is out there is whether or not Airway Heights should pursue changing their overlay zone to something more similar to Spokane County. And the commitment there was that we would put together all, you know, because there's there's the ACOs, there's the county, there's the city Spokane, there's Airway Heights. Um each has a slightly different um set of overlay zones with regards to Fairchild to put those together and then do a comparison of the codes. Um and we would present those to our city council so they could kind of see why each of these jurisdictions are a little slightly different on their regulations. So just in summary, um we didn't include the contours on a public engagement exercise because it the analysis had been done before the maps were prepared and it just made the maps a little more difficult to read. Um we do intend to include the contours on the maps um that we present in the draft plan, um just as we did in the last comprehensive plan. So people can see those moving forward and we've um offered to have a conversation, including Spokane County, Fairchild and the city to talk about the differences in the various agencies overlays and and what those mean and um you know, if the city council wants to move in a direction of amending its current overlay area. So hopefully I didn't lose anybody in that that explanation.
Jamie.
Um no, you didn't lose me. Definitely. I I get it. I'm not positive that all um alternatives have been looked at in accordance with J-List and or even in looking at like the urban gr- growth boundary west doesn't make sense to me. So um I definitely think there needs to be conversations.
Absolutely. And we we will follow through um with that presentation. Um and you know, go through this conversation about the the J-List. But I think we're in this would be in a double checking with Jeff Johnson, with Fairchild and Scott um Chesney with Spokane County. My understanding is we all agreed that everybody recognized Airway Heights adopted overlay zone and the application of that is is what we're using. And so therefore the analysis we used was what we've adopted, not Spokane County, which is different from, as I understand, the state Spokane as well. So um there's there's certainly an intent there to provide um base compatibility and and predictability for Fairchild. We'll continue to to work through that. Absolutely, Jamie.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Hey, Jamie, I have a question for you. This is Cal. Just just a general question. Uh you see that Airway Heights has a growth and we're also seeing that that Airway Heights is is getting uh growth is happening. From the perspective that the air force, what do you see happening in 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 the next two to three years from from your personnel and people moving into the base and looking for housing in Airway Heights?
Well, it's been pretty crazy. Um on base because we've grown quite a bit um due to um getting a lot of fleets of tankers. And so that brings with us a lot of people for that, you know, pilots and mechanics and you know, all the personnel that actually have to um that actually do their jobs to support that mission. So um we've grown quite a bit over the last short while, which is you know, why you guys have probably grown quite a bit over the last little while. And you know, then we've had an influx of people from different states coming here. So um I uh I can't predict the future, Cal.
No, I just wanted to get your perspective because we're not we don't get data for how how you guys are growing in the air force base. So just to help us understand and balance things out, we just want a perspective, you know?
Okay, my perspective, and this may not be Jeff's, which you know, he probably knows a little bit more than me. But right now, we do not have the like tarmac space per se to house a bunch more aircraft. So um we're gonna have to have a lot of construction going on uh to get more aircraft in here to house them. So that will take time.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
If Jamie has no further questions, uh next person?
Yeah, next I believe is uh Lucas Tellison.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Just state your name.
Yes, Elizabeth Tellison at Winston Anka Shay. And I've have a couple of hats on tonight. Um I represent CPM Corporation, the owner of the mineral lands in the northern section that are identified as item G on the alternatives two and three. And I won't elaborate too much on that other than to maybe just impart kind of some of my opinions and experiences, having looked at a lot of developments in and around this county and other counties across the state. And as you go through this process, you know, not only is it important that you identify suitable areas, but that those areas are likely to be converted to the use that you designate. And this particular property isn't one of those properties. It's not likely to be converted. So you could theoretically um rezone it. But it's not going to help your problem. And I think that might be true. And I am not, um I don't have the Randall Danskin letter, but I can hazard a guess at who that came from. And so you'll want to, I think, be more purposefully engaged as you go through this process with the landowners, more than Facebook posts, more than mailings. Face-to-face conversations with the people that you're relying on to develop their property. Um for instance, F-two is a pretty big chunk of land, a hundred and thirty-eight acres that's being designated, I think in both alternatives two and three. It's already divided into what appears to be about ten acre parcels. And so you're in expecting if you go down this route, that each one of those ten acre parcels will at some point in due course be converted to some level of a subdivision. Maybe that's true for some of them. Maybe it's true for all of them. But because you guys are so constrained with both the airport and air force overlay zones, the restrictions on your capital facilities and the ability to grow your urban growth area. Um as you go through this process, it's it's just going to be incumbent on the city to really make sure that they are selecting properties that are likely to be converted. Um in addition to that, I think as um Jamie was speaking to, you know, ensuring that the uses that you are slating these properties for are compatible with the existing uses, you know, putting a bunch of residential development next to your industrial areas, especially if it's kind of suburban type development tends to create incompatibility. So you have the opportunity at this stage to really dive into those issues and try to head off some of those problems um in advance of them becoming problems. Um switching gears a little bit to the Ewing Oswald piece. Um I appreciate the city's position as it relates to, you know, we have enough commercial and industrial area right now. We don't want the southern portion. Um I seems to me that might be a little bit short-sighted, particularly as it relates to the creation of a logical boundary, both for your incorporated areas and your UGA. And so while that might not be your laser focus right now, um it seems a little short-sighted to preclude its analysis and just ignore its existence altogether. In that regard, you have a willing landowner, you have property that's situated in a way that services can be reasonably made available to it. And in the near term. So that combination of attributes is not something I see that pops out at me at a lot of in a lot of these others areas. Um so just try not to cut yourselves too short on whether or not that swap that has gone through a great deal of transparency to date um isn't just ignored and um shoved off to the side. And then finally, this is really apropos to neither of my clients. But you are looking at going only to a median density on some of these outer lying parcels. And given the constraints that you guys are dealing with just geographically, I would encourage you to really look at in the places where you aren't running into sound contour problems, looking at higher density. Because the Growth Management Act does and is being um advocated for in the eastern side of the state a lot more. And the infill development and the ability to increase urban densities in existing cities and in existing urban growth areas, that pressure is going to continue to build as not only Airway Heights grows, but Spokane County grows, Eastern Washington grows, and the Northwest grows. So I again wouldn't have your sights set in too near the future um and kind of avoid the opportunity to really plan for some long-range growth while you have this opportunity. Um so that's just my own personal soapbox. I know you guys are working really hard on this and your staff is working really hard. And this is really only the beginning. So I will continue to be engaged on behalf of my clients. And I appreciate all the time you guys have and will continue to put in.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth, uh for your comments. We really appreciate. Thank you very much, Elizabeth, for your comments. We really appreciate.
All right, we have one more Darla.
Good evening, Darla.
Hi, my name is Darla Spence and I speak for my parents Gary and Kay Nelson. And we live on the land northwest of Airway Heights. Just give a little bit of history about who we are. My family has lived on our land since the nineteen thirties. And I'm the fourth generation to live on this land. My parents raised four children on this land. My father farmed our land since since nineteen sixty five. And my great grandfather farmed before that. We greatly oppose all three proposals. Because it shows we no longer live on our own land. We are gone. Our houses, the very house that I was born and raised in is gone. Is that upsetting to anybody? Your childhood home is just bulldozed over. How would you feel? Please let me know. It's very frustrating and it's very, very, very unbelievably stressful. What is good for Airway Heights is not good for my family. And we greatly oppose this.
Thank you. Zach, what property was she referring to just for reference?
I believe it is. The property off Craig Road just to the north of the city boundary, if I'm not mistaken.
You also mentioned in here, our property north. Of what you mentioned further, it's like a hundred and thirty four acres. Do you want to rezone it to medium density? So we have a hundred and thirty eight acres and the UGA, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty eight acres. Which is on Craig Road. And then the other property that's ours that you want to rezone to medium density is a hundred and thirty four acres, which is right below Denno.
Okay, so it sounds like Darla is speaking about the property of the family owns is A. That they include A, is that correct Darla? Right here on the map in front.
Yeah, A is the one section and the other one is F one.
Okay, just for clarity, Darla, A is already in a joint planning area for Spokane County and the city of Airway Heights. And I believe that occurred probably back in two thousand and eight. So the only the only proposal before the the plan commission is to whether. As an option to choose. F one, which is north of the property or in EGA, F two, which is along. Craig Road, I, which is on the other side of Hayford or J, which is also on the other side of Hayford. But but A is already in a joint planning area and has been for at least two thousand and eight, if not two thousand and six.
Okay, bear with me, I'm a lawyer. So are you saying that we are already in a UGA? Since when?
If if the property that you're speaking about is is A on this map, then that that property was included in a potential. In an adopted UGA area, at least since two thousand and eight. And what might be helpful is.
We were never, never, never informed of that. Even one of your maps from November of two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one. We were not a UGA. So we were never informed legally. So how could we? I liked, I'd love to see those paperwork with a dated, maybe like a court stating that we were in a UGA since two thousand and eight. I'd love to see those paperwork.
Yeah, Darla, let me, we'll put our contact information in the chat and follow up with us. We'll be happy to go through the history. With you to address any questions you might have about past actions of of the Spokane County and the city. With regards to the property and and we'll also provide some additional information about. What a lady's designation may mean. And so just everybody here in the audience. The idea is this is a twenty year plan. We are going to be required to do another update by state law. By twenty twenty six, but the goals, these are, these are long range plans so that it provides some predictability. For all the parties about what may happen with ladies, but Darla, please, please get ahold of us, we'll talk to you and ensure that background.
It'd be nice if you can contact and get all the information so you have a little bit of clarity. Because tonight I don't think we can address all those issues that you brought up. Because you 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 have to see the documents and the paperwork just to make sure that whatever is said or whatever. Is is made the changes, you you're aware of that.
All I will say is I'm very unhappy with what what you're doing and my family is very unhappy. And yeah, I would love to see those documents and when they were dated.
If somebody can provide her the contact information so she can follow up.
I will be talking with your planning commission. Thank you.
So just to clarify, is the F one not at all involved in this scenario?
Is that Mark?
Yes.
F one is one option. So remember that the. That in these alternatives, two and three. That the concept is potentially to exchange area F. On this drawing, which is about a hundred and eighty acres over the offer vehicle park. With some other piece of property that borders the city. That's in the unincorporated county so that the city of Airway Heights has the ability to grow. Because we have a, we have a demand of population and housing that we're required to meet. We are looking certainly at multiple options, which include also up zoning portions. Of the city, but yes, F one is one option. So when you look at options number two and three.
Heather. Sorry, I hate to interrupt, but what I'm asking is the the public comment that just was made. It's addressing something that we're not, we're not even looking at, correct? Or is she saying that the F one area will impact their family as well as the one that's already in a huge gate?
My understanding is that Darla indicated that they had concerns about F one as well.
Okay, that's what I'm just trying to make sure and understand and clarify.
Thank you, thank you for letting me know that that was your question.
Sorry, I I phrased it wrong to be given, I think, you know.
Thank you, Darla, for your comments. We appreciate it. Zach, anybody else?
No, you are good to go.
Okay, so I'm going to. Close any any comments from anybody and I'm going to open up for discussion. But before we do that, is there anywhere we can put a summary of? What we're supposed to make a decision on tonight?
The the verbal summary is that we're asking for the plan commission to recommend alternative one. Or.
Two.
In alter, not all of all, not all of alternative two, because. In alternative two, the plan commission needs to make, if you were to select alternative two, you would need to eliminate. Either F one or F two, because you only have a, think of it as, you know. A puzzle, there's only a hundred maybe acres available for swap. F one has a hundred and thirty four, F two has another hundred and thirty eight. So ideally, you probably would be picking either F one or F two if. Alternative two was the preferred. Ladies scenario by the plan commission. But it it's only a hundred maybe acre, so that's why you would not be able to recommend. Alternative two by itself, because there's too too much acreage. With the line F two combined.
Okay.
And the same thing with alternative three. Is you've got the same question about the swap, which is either F one, F two. It would be actually a little bit less than I would be only a hundred and eighty acres of I and about a hundred and eighty acres of J. So only one of those alternatives would be the recommendation if you selected alternative three.
But do we have to be a specific on F one? And F, I think, F eight? Or no, F two, sorry.
Yes, you need, you would, you need to pick one of these alternatives.
Okay.
And not to confuse it a little bit more. Let's say, let's say that. Mark thought it was a great idea to take eighty acres from F one. And take a hundred acres out of I. You know, you could do, you could make your own alternative. That's that's an option out there. So it might be helpful. For the plan commission to just kind of talk through the alternatives and and you've got some feedback from the public, you've got. Some information we got from the webpage as to if there are some of these that you want to eliminate. Looking at at these pieces.
I remember when we talked about this months ago, it was the F two that was. It just made the most sense with how the city was growing. And I just still feel that way, that F two is the the best spot to do right now. Then you brought up at that time, Heather, you know, when they did it originally, it's changed since then. So our decision now could very well change, you know, long term. But looking at that, that F two is the the best spot right now in my mind.
Well, I'd like to open it up for the commissioners as a as a group. I think we should first. Decide whether we want alternative one, two or three. And then we can follow up with 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 why, what we want to take out, I guess, from the alternatives. So maybe we can just generally talk about how we feel about which alternative to pick. And originally, when I first came to this, when we started this, I was looking at more as a steady growth planning, but like like Mark said. Today, after all this information and in seeing what's happening. I'm now moving towards two or three. So I would like to open up for discussion amongst ourselves and just talk about the alternatives, how each person feels like.
Yeah, I would say alternative two, Cal, and then just stick with the F two. I don't think we should split up property or anything like that, like Heather was saying there at the very end.
No problem, Hank. Do we have Hank?
I just, sorry about that, Cal. I had to unmute my, my dog was starting to bark out here. I was just sort of revisiting this alternative three, it seems like. And and I'm not, I'm not opposing what Mark is saying about F two, but I. It it seems like al- alternative three gives you one and two and some additional options. You know? I don't know.
The only reason I was, I I liked alternative three, but the reason I was kind of hesitant. Not like totally is because of that path that's going across that. Property for connection of the road, you know. I I, you know, the asphalt driveway or whatever that was called. So I was marked like zero, zero, eight and zero, zero, nine right now. So I would prefer to do three, but but the thing that's holding me back is that little thing, sorry. You can carry on, Hank.
No, no, that's quite all right. I I think it's good that, you know, we we have some healthy discussion about it because. I mean, it's kind of a big deal, right? And so.
It's a long term decision.
Yeah, so you know, we certainly want to put our best foot forward, but. Again, I I know Mark's got more experience with this particular thing than I do, but. I I don't know, I I think. I think if you like alternative two, you get alternative two, do you not? In alternative three plus. You get some potential for some additional development, right? Or maybe Heather can correct me if I'm not reading this right.
So just to summarize, alternative two and alternative three both have have some reasons proposed. So one you heard from tonight, that the legal representative of the property owner, which is G. And then the other one is here. So alternative two and three both include. Rezoning to residential for some industrial property. The only then real difference between alternative two and three then. Is where a UGA swap could potentially be so that the on alternative two, the UGA swaps are on the west side. In alternative three, you can also consider UGA swaps on the east side of Hayford Road, but. In alternative two and alternative three both, only one UGA area. Up to a hundred maybe acres is what we would be able to consider in an alternative. And I I would just point out that we've discussed this also in a previous workshop. The pink line on these maps represents the limits of the water service boundary for Airway Heights. So Airway Heights Water Service Boundary goes from Hayford Road West. Water Service Boundary, east there is the city of Spokane. The purple line is the school district boundary change. And if you remember the city council, some of the members had concerns about. That everything north of the line is in the Great Northern School District.
Yeah, they're two different districts, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing south was in the Cheney School District. Now, what this doesn't show is is that. The lines from the school district kind of meanders kind of strangely off. When you go over to the east. But the. You know, that's what these these maps are showing is things that came up during the workshops that we wanted to have out there for. Representation and discussion.
So we are looking at twenty years, right? This particular plan, just for clarification.
Yes, it's a twenty year plan, but in reality, we will come back.
We can change it.
We will be changing potentially, or at least re reviewing at a minimum this work. Probably in twenty twenty five, because we're required to. Do what's called a periodic update by twenty twenty six. And I believe Elizabeth Tellus and mentioned this. There's a lot of legislation moving down the road that. Potentially will become new requirements we have to meet when we do the twenty twenty six plan. So. We're looking at adopting in twenty twenty four. We're gonna have to update this plan in in just three more years.
Based on, oh, go ahead, Mark.
If we were to choose option two and not include those areas east of Hayford. Would that impact any of the stuff that's already going on in those properties with the Spokane County? Or the city of Spokane, sorry.
I don't think alternative two has those properties, Mark.
Sorry, alternative three, I apologize.
That's a really good question. What we've discussed is that that if the commission wanted to identify a UGA swap. From alternative three, either I or J. We would only identify it as a as a potential future UGA area to be studied. With the twenty twenty six update. Because it's in a separate water service area and we don't have the ability to provide water. It's it's an adopted boundary. At the county, so it would present the opportunity to like bookmark it and say, we we sincerely see one of these as a future UGA. That we understand that there's some work that would have to be done in the interim in order to see if we could ever have this as UGA. And the reason is. The city of Spokane in their ordinances requires annexation in the city of Spokane if they provide water. So this is a discussion that's been provided during the application that Jack Estelle. So, um, this is a discussion that's been provided during the application that Jack Castell um mentioned. And Elizabeth Castell was present at those meetings. Um, which is a is an issue here, which is Airway Heights doesn't have the right to serve. Um, and Spokane can require annexation, so it could actually become part of the city of Spokane. It wouldn't be our UGA. But. We could identify it as as kind of a, you know, throw a mark out out on. The terrain and say, we would like to study this more, we'd like to enter into discussions and see if we can get there. In a conversation with the city of Spokane. If the plan commission thinks that, you know, one of these properties is. The best way to utilize a valuable asset, which is. An urban growth area, we we can potentially consider a swap, and is is that the best? Um, site for a variety of reasons um to consider future UGA, and then just a little bit. More for you is the idea is is growth, right? We we are going to grow and potentially that would become an annexation area for the city of Airway Heights. That's why it's a joint planning area between Spokane County and Airway Heights.
Thank you, Heather.
Yes.
After listening to all that, I do think, like. Knowing that we're gonna re- readdress this in a couple of years. That maybe we should look at option three then, because that allows us to choose F two and those uh options east. Of Hayford. And we can always change in the future if need be. I do feel like we should leave F one out of this equation, though.
I I I think personally, F three would be a great idea, because like like alternative three, sorry. Correction, and like Mark said, you know, we have an opportunity to change it. Before twenty years, so it does give us some leeway there, we're not stuck with it. So, you know, I'm I'm leaning more towards alternative three. Did I lose everybody? Oh, everybody went quiet. I thought I lost you guys, I was talking to myself. I I I think that we 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 should look at this, the way we've been talking about it, and maybe tonight we we kind of wort on it. So I I don't wanna split it up so that half of us go to alternative two and all to to three. I think we have Stephanie online too, right, tonight? So there's three of us.
I I agree, you know, with Plan Three and all of that, I I understand the. The hesitations and things like that, but I really feel like. You know, that that's that may be the best opportunity.
Yeah, I didn't want us all to pick one alternative and not have a word tonight.
I think you guys consensus on option three, right? That gives us.
More flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I think as a group, we should wort on alternative three. But we have to make a decision on the, Mark said something about F one, I was I wasn't very clear about that.
So I think we should just take, like, F one land swap should just not even be a consideration. If we're gonna do land swap, it should be F two. Or one of the areas east of Hayford.
Okay, that, you mean I, right?
I can't see the letters right now.
Okay, so you mean the one that's two hundred and eleven acres?
Yes.
F one is, F one is one hundred and thirty-four acres, and that was the same. Area that the lady earlier was upset about, so I just wanna make clarification, so we don't mix it up.
Well, I'm saying we should either, like, F one should not be part of this. I don't think that that's a good swap regardless.
It's it's not a swap, I think it's a rezone, right?
It is a swap, Cal.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, you only get one, so. Out of F one, F two, I and J, you would only um get to recommend one. Of those properties up to a hundred and eighty acres out of option three.
And I think we all agree that option three is the better of the options. I think if you look at the areas we could swap, F one isn't even the better option. So we can make, we can make the family happy at being taken off right now. Uh, and we can choose one of these other areas, which I think F two or I is the better of the two options. I, when, if we can make these agreements with Spokane later on down the line, but we do have that flexibility in twenty twenty-five.
So for tonight, we should just pick F two, and then how would we word that I is included for future? Or we 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 will just pick, we will just pick F two tonight? Heather, how would we word this so that we can move forward with this? We are, we are deciding as a group to do alternative three. And I'm speaking for everybody, so if anybody has any objections, please stop me, and we're gonna swap F two.
So if that was the, what the plan commission wanted to, you'd actually be picking an alternative two. Because alternative two already um removes from consideration I and J. And only has F one and F two on it.
So if we wanna bring in I, I. I. And J later on. We'll have the option after two thousand twenty-five, correct?
Yes, we we will have to do an update in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
It it for it to be officially adopted by twenty twenty-six.
All right.
So I think what we're all saying is option three, but just get rid of F one as an option in there. And leave in F two, I and J, knowing that I and J are not the primary right now. Because I and J have other issues with water and these joint um agreements with the city of Spokane.
So Mark, just to clarify, there's only a hundred and eighty acres to swap. Um, so what are you, what you're proposing is that I F two is the preferred swap for the hundred and eighty acres. But you wanna somehow footnote? That I and J would be properties in the future that the city would like to consider. But not be the, not be the hundred and eighty acre swap?
I think that would be the right wording.
Yes, and it. I think that's the correct, but if, you know, the water get situation changes next year, let's say. And before we even get to twenty twenty-five and we're redoing this, well, then that makes I a different equation. And we can look at that land swap versus F two.
So.
Am I making sense here, or am I?
Yeah, you you are, um, so just keep in mind that um. We. Could do capital facilities, utilities, and transportation analysis for. The reasons that are proposed in alternative three, and we can do it for F two. Um, but we would not be able to do it for I and J because of the water issues. They don't have the ability to serve that area. Um. So I kind of think of it as like. What I think you're suggesting, Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that F two would be the, would be the. The preferred UGA swap. And then if there was an opportunity in the future to expand. And have more urban growth area, that maybe I and J would be considered, because. Um, we would have, we'd have to, we would have to come back anyway in twenty twenty-five. And do an analysis of I and J if. The water service boundary was able to be modified, or you know, some other, you know, legal uh arrangement was made. Um, in order, because we have to use the comprehensive plan as a, as a formal mechanism to amend the UGA. So we can't administratively. Change from F two to another location, and we would have to do the required analysis in this plan in order to. Um, have F two as a consideration as well. Does that make any sense? Either or, it's it's kind of like we have the ability to do some analysis, we can bookmark others.
So we should just pick alternative two with uh F two as a swap for now. It's only three years from now, we're gonna relook at this.
Yeah, very true.
Heather, am I allowed to comment at all right now?
Uh, can you wait till we finish this? I'd like the commissioners to finish this thinking thought and not stop the thinking thought, that's why.
So, Cal, let let me ask a quick question, Cal. Are you, now you're suggesting that you wanna go to. Alternative two as opposed to alternative three?
Since we cannot, yeah, that's, the reason is because alternative two and three are similar, except the fact. Alternative three has I and uh. I and J, and we're not gonna be able to do anything with I and J right now. And based on Heather's comment that two thousand twenty-five, they are gonna relook at this, and at that time, if water is available. And this, in the situation changes, things can be different at that point. But there's no point putting a footnote or a a a a and note on the bottom saying that, okay, we still want I and J. This is only three years from now, and I don't think in three years, alternative three would become that important. It's a twenty-year plan, that's why. So I'm thinking of more of alternative two. And a- a- and and do the swap as F two. Because we cannot do anything on east of Hayford.
Now, F two's the the better spot right now for growth anyhow. You're just, you're gonna have that more growth there, especially with that mining operation out there and that J.
Are we confused? Did I confuse everybody?
My only concern that I, what precipitated my asking the question, Cal, was that you were pretty bent on. Alternative three, and then all of a sudden, you're back to alternative two.
No, the only reason I I changed to alternative two is because there's nothing we can do with I and J. Which is the east of Hayford.
But if we, but if we select alternative three, let's just for giggles, if we were to select that. We're not encumbered with doing anything with I and J, are we? So I I guess I don't understand.
So my confusion maybe is, I thought that we're only allowed to pick one. So if we pick F two, and I and J, we we cannot pick that, right? So maybe I'm misunderstanding, Heather, if you wanna just make a little bit of clarification on this misunderstanding.
Yeah, so just, just really clear. We, because we're, we don't meet the criteria. Based on the amount of growth we have, because we have a lot of growth, we can't propose new UGA more than what we already have. So that leaves us presently with the alternative of considering a swap, and that swap is only a hundred and eighty acres.
Right.
So the goal tonight is to pick. A spot. That is the preferred alternative for that's, for that swap, and if it. Takes time to get there and takes negotiations, you know, that that certainly is is a possibility. If. The plan commission thinks that there is a more natural um area. Well, which said, there's just another area that you see on this map as a, as the preferred alternative for that swap. That's what we're seeking from you. So of the four, what is the preferred alternative of the plan commission?
Like, I just go back to my assessment, F two, I think is the better of all the land swaps.
And I still would argue for alternative three. To some extent. You know, I I see where you're going with the, because you're still looking for a trade-off mark, right? If it, if there's, if it's alternative two. You know, it's not alternative two unamended, right? Sorry, who's people today?
No, Stephanie, um, to, your question was between the differences between alternative two and alternative three, alternative two is showing.
What Mark proposed was, you know, alternative two with with the amendment possibly, you know, down the line. Yeah, for me, alternative three, if we need to make a decision right now, still. Makes the most sense to me, I guess, so.
We just.
Go ahead.
Which piece of property in alternative three for UGA?
I mean that. It's that I J, or I can't really. Oh, that two hundred and eleven acres. Okay. Yeah, so it's that, it's in that that corner, you know, up by uh. That two hundred and eleven acres, that's I, you know, for for me, that's the sticking point on both of it, because we're talking about like. Amending. Alternative two to kind of include that. So.
So you think the the I zone is the better area to swap land for, correct, Stephanie?
Yes. But I also, I also understand the concerns, like people have brought things up, like it it, yeah.
Water is an issue in I, I think we pick I.
There was. Yeah, there was, there was a couple issues with those those lands east of Hayford, because it's. It's zoned differently for school, there's the water issue, they talk about, at least in J, if I'm understanding. Understanding correctly, we have the the, the road may be an issue accessing through there. Um. There, I feel like there was something else, we went through this earlier or late last year. Where the F two had access to something already right now, that these other ones didn't have access to.
But F two in the grand scheme of things is what, a hundred and thirty-eight? Well, yeah, I see that.
I feel like Jamie, Jamie wants to say something about the F two, so I feel like.
Yeah, let's uh, let's open up that if that makes, helps us. Jamie? Uh, Zach, can you let Jamie make her comment?
So this one's probably for Heather, because she's, you know, the. The vault of knowledge. I don't even know what to call her, she just knows.
You can call her a library.
Vault of knowledge.
So, the urban growth area that's west of the city and closest to the base. Um, south of F two, um, why? So is there a reason why we're not including that in a swap? Because it's in such an area that that would, we would never want that to be residential. Hmm. Because it's in our APZ and, you know, all of that, so I'm wondering. Um, and I am probably late on the game on this, but is there a certain? Number of acres or percentage of your urban growth area that you could swap at a time? Just to give it more.
Yeah, the first answer to the question is this UGA area, which is again um, south of US two, which I said, I think you're referencing, Jamie. That was adopted again, um, probably in two thousand eight. And that area south, south of US two, where this catch line is, is is within the the sound contours. And so it's restricted from having any residential. We brought this to workshop with the plan commission this fall, the idea of of potentially swapping. Or consider swapping some of that property as well, in order to increase the amount of acreage that can go toward residential. And the plan commission and the city council um recommended not touching it, just just leaving that that UGA as is. Incorporate that commercial and industrial land, so that's why it's not in the alternatives being considered.
Sorry, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I was just curious about that, because it's it's a, you know, large area that, um. Is is definitely not zoned. Any kind of residential right now. I mean, some of it is, there are some trailer parks that are, um.
That's actually over here, that's further to the east. And that's no longer residential, it's all in the APZ and we reasoned it's industrial. Do I put into the right place on the map?
Yeah, um, they're just. There is some, there are some trailer parks in that zone. It's on the very west side of that zone, so if you go down Fairview Heights Road, which is on the very left of that zone. Um, Fairview Heights has a little trailer park there and then on that corner. There is a car lot. I don't mean to interrupt you guys, though, for making your decision tonight for whatever you have to do, but, um.
So JB, you don't see any issues, though, with F two? The area we are considering on that end, as far as impacting Fairchild.
Jamie, are you there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I muted myself and I forgot. F two and Heather, is that like the center kind of, yeah?
Yeah, F two is, it excludes these pieces and it it comes around and takes in this.
Yeah, so it's it's. Though the city of Airway Heights contours are different than the Jayless contours and so, um, they vary. Um, and so I believe the other contours may hit that, but I don't remember. I would have to look.
I feel. That I remember when we discussed setting this option up, this was one of our conversations then was we stayed outside of these contour lines. We were not gonna be impacting. It doesn't seem to me that you have concerns. Other than the Jayless agreement may have some different things, but I know we hashed that out last year as well. This was just, I I just was part of our thought process back then.
Yeah, and I actually, I took a quick look at the map that I have and I don't think that F two necessarily impacts anything, yeah. And the I parcel either. And that's why I was suggesting, like, if you could increase your acreage, it would be nice for you to get both of them, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, it would be definitely nice.
Since we're talking about sand contours, I've got the twenty twenty comp plan adopted map up with sand contour, so I is roughly in this area here. This is the closest sand contour. And then F two is down in here. And then and then this piece of property is F one. There's the county off-road vehicle park that we're looking at doing the swap. And then this was. Uh, F, this is existing UGA right here. And the UN Oswald property. Um, here's the airport or relay zone, here is the city of Airway Heights, so contours extended. Um, out into the county, and so that's why, um, the. Concept shows property a little bit north is because of the sound contours here. But I thought that may help be helpful, so you can see the contours on the map.
And we can only swap one hundred and eighty acres, right? Correct?
Right, we cannot propose something greater than what we have to exchange and. And Jamie asked a great question, which was early on in the workshopping process. Their recommendation was to not. Use some of the other UGA area. In order to facilitate that swap, like the UGA and so.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Oh, I think my opinion based on listening to everything and kind of rethinking. I'm now Hank, Hank, I'm gonna lean towards alternative three with the swap of F two. I was a little bit misunderstanding there in the beginning, but now I'm leaning towards that.
Listen, Cal, nobody's pressuring you there, big guy.
I know, I know.
But just remember.
We gotta make a good decision here, you know, it's just like I'm speaking out my thoughts now.
Just remember, though, that alternative three, when you consider alternative three, you know, it just says potential. It doesn't say we're we're.
Doing it, right, right.
It says potential, depending upon, you know, what the real needs are for the city, right? It just sort of gives you an opportunity. To take a look at that and granted, there's money to have that has to be spent for utilities and transportation and all that jazz. But at least it gives you an opportunity to explore.
Look forward.
Yeah.
Look forward, right? No, I agree now that listening to everybody, I'm leaning more towards alternative three and F two swap.
I second that.
Well, okay. No, you 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 know what, it's important that we all agree on certain things and understand. Because you know, this this is gonna impact everybody, whatever we do tonight, you know?
So just as a point of clarification, if the commission wants to have. The zoning, um, which we haven't discussed yet in alternative three, which is also an alternative two. Um, can you identify if you if the commission selects F two? Why alternative three is being selected? Because alternative three only includes these UGA proposals. That are east of Hayford Road, so I'm I'm not understanding if that was the motion, what? You you are proposing with.
Only only reason I changed my mind from alternative two to three. Is like Hank said earlier, you know, I and J is a future, I know we're not gonna swap it. But the the option is there, so if you need to plan or you need to look further into, say, ten years from now. At least alternative three gives you that option and if you're able to swap land. Say five years from now or who knows, maybe two years from now, you still have the option there.
Yeah, but here's here's the thing, though. You're 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 choosing option three, al- alternative three, but with a change in it. I'm just simply. Choosing alternative three the way it's written.
No, I'm not, I'm not choosing that we stake out I and J, I I'm I'm saying leave everything the way it is. But the reason why I'm picking three over two is because I and J is included in three.
So just to be real clear, um, I don't think we can go forward with a ladies alternative. That identifies three UGA areas.
Okay.
For only a hundred and eighty acres based on. Based on some unknown factor about which one would come first.
So no, so so my misunderstanding now is then why are we, why are we? Looking at alternative two and three if. If we pick, say, for example, one swap, I we cannot pick I. Because that's two hundred and eleven acres, say for sake of sake of argument. Just to understand, say we pick. Alternative three and I say, okay, we wanna do I. That's not gonna be possible, because that's two hundred and eleven acres there, right?
You could, uh, you could recommend alternative three with the preferred UGA. Area of I up to a hundred and eighty acres, that could be, that could be exactly what you. Propose and that would be the plan that would move forward.
So the only thing we'll be losing. If we go to alternative two versus three is we're gonna, if we pick F one. We're only gonna pick a hundred and eighty, a hundred and thirty-eight acres, so we're gonna lose another fifty-two acres that we couldn't use, right? Is that correct?
Um, basically, when we were looking at the geography, there were things that, um. That the plant commission and the city council wanted to remove from consideration for the public, and so when when we look at, for example. The hundred and thirty-eight acres in F two, it was because result. That, um, the plant commission didn't wanna include. Because of the the concern about the proximity to the railroad. So that left a hundred and thirty acres as a result of of the workshop, um, recommendation from the plant commission. With regards to if you're leaving something on the table, um, if you wanna come up with a full hundred meter recommendation. You could say that. You know, if you wanted to do I, it's only up to a hundred and eighty acres if you, um, recommended F two. Um, say, you want it to be the hundred and thirty acres or you'd like to consider. Additional acreage, um, north or to the west of it to make up the hundred and eighty acres. Um, it won't be partial, but that's okay, but but you can make that recommendation that you'd like to see. It in the vicinity of of F two for an equivalent of a hundred and eighty acres.
No, that makes sense, thank you, Ed, that's more more clarification now, you know?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's so confusing, um, that. This alternative F in three. Is coming down to you need to pick one UGA area and you also need to consider. Those rezones, which are, uh, H and and G.
Let me, let me draw a question to the commissioners as a discussion, um, so. So if basically the difference between alternative two and three is the I and G. So if we had to pick from one to the other. So if we had picked F two, we we, there's no reason to pick alternative three, because it doesn't make sense. So we have to pick alternative two and correct me if I'm wrong, Heather. So so what I what I'm thinking, where I was getting confused was I was thinking that if you pick I and J. Future, you can add it, but that's not the case, so. What I understand that alternative, if we pick F two for now, if we all decide that, okay, F two is the correct swap. Then alternative two is the only choice we have, we don't have to pick alternative three. But then if we decide that, oh, we want a hundred and eighty acres. And F two doesn't have it, so we pick I, then we have to go to alternative three, is that correct? My understanding?
Yes, if if you want to, um, pick. I, you would be, you'd be picking I off of alternative three, before we talked about, everything else is essentially the same. Um, can you, can we, um, possibly take a break for just a few minutes?
Yeah, definitely, let's do a five, ten minutes?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes, let's take a five minutes break, everybody, Zach. Yeah, if you still have more to go after this, so let's do that, okay?
Hey, we're not recording.
Thank you, President.
Okay, uh, so to make this much easier and I apologize for the confusion. Uh, cause we're we're operating off a document that was tied to the ability to actually drop comments into a into the format. We're going to just take a map and we're gonna work through each of the pieces of the map. And the recommendation would be for the plant commission to give a consensus yes or no. Um, and then that would be the preferred alternative, you can ask questions certainly along the way. Um, but to to re-review the ground rules, you're you're choosing. One preferred alternative for an urban growth area. You can, you can mix and match up to a hundred and eighty acres. And we're gonna go through the proposed reasons.
Okay.
And and what what we're gonna do is Zach's can be able to mark up the drawing. So that we know what what was rejected and what was asked to carry forward. Ideally, that's what will happen, is that, does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna start, uh, on something simpler, uh, which is. Let's go ahead and start with F one, my understanding is that F one, that the consensus of the plant commission was not. To have F one, which is swap on the north.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
So we, everybody agrees on F three.
Okay, I'm dropping X's for no's and checks for yes.
Okay.
Both.
Okay. Uh, now comes the heart, the next harder one, which is, um, F two.
I think that's the best option.
I like F two, but as you said earlier, if we can see if we can get a maximum one eighty there.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Hank?
Yeah.
All right. Um, so you, it seems like you picked F two. Would you prefer I or F two?
I would say F two.
I would say F two as well.
I'd say F two, yes.
Mister Hank?
Yeah, again, I is recognized as being a future potential.
Yeah, so.
Today and tomorrow, I would go with that, what you guys selected.
F two.
Yeah.
Okay, so put a X on I, then Zach? Okay, and so if you had a choice between F two and J?
F two again.
F two.
I agree, F two.
I agree.
Okay, congratulations, you you picked up a firm UGA. Okay, so so now we're gonna go through the rezones. All right, so we'll start with, uh, G. Um, G was the one where, um, the it's owned by a mineral company.
G was the, uh, G?
G is in goat.
Okay, let's see whether, okay, I see that. So we we're asking the question, do we rezone that, correct?
To residential from industrial.
I'd say yes.
It's from industrial residential.
It could be from industrial residential and the attorney indicated that they didn't, they didn't want to, they wanted to keep it industrial.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I would say yes, just because it's proximity to where the recreational center is and and all of that. But I know that we're gonna come against some obvious, some barriers there.
Can they be grandfathered in if, um, we say yes to changing that?
Oh, well, the property is vacant right now, um, so no, there's no grandfathering, cause there's no use on the property. If.
Oh, so they're they're not even using those memorial rights right now?
No, if it changes to residential, then. Um, if they wanted to do mining, they would need to go back. Through the comp plan process, get it changed back to industrial and get it reasoned, so it it, there's no grandfathering. Because I don't believe there's. Because I don't believe there's any mining on that. I think it's vacant.
I would say I'm okay with the lane you switch, even with the blowback that comes with that.
I agree.
Rezone, right?
Yes.
Okay, if everybody agrees on rezone, say I.
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 We have three. Hank?
Yeah, I said I.
Okay, so we have all four, okay.
Okay. All right.
I just.
Apologize, Cal, did you wanna say something?
No, no, no. I just wanna make sure that everybody is 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 voting and we're all counting the numbers.
Okay. So the next one to consider is H.
H.
H would go from industrial to residential.
I would say I.
Yeah, I'm as well.
So it sounds like everybody said yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, um. So then the B properties, those are, those are already in the twenty twenty conference of plans and B one, B two. B three, B four. Um, carry those forward into this recommendation as medium density residential.
I would say I almost, yeah.
I guess.
Um. The density assumption for the area that's mixed use. Um, to reduce that assumption down to ten percent in the current comp plan, it was at thirty percent. We've not seen a single project in that area. Um, so the recommendation is is to lower the expectation that we would get residential to meet our housing demand down to ten percent. Does the the planning commission agree with that?
The one that you marked on the south side?
Uh, yeah, it's got the hatched lines over red on the north and the south side of the US two.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. At this point, if we haven't seen any sort of, you know, development plan in that area. I understand why, you know, it's right along the the busy road, all the thing noise and and all that, so.
Okay, so it sounds like that's a yes. And then the last one is is kind of tricky, uh which is E. So that's currently designated commercial. It has a mixed use overlay to allow for mixed use. There is a application by the council tribes to rezone it to high density residential. Um. So do you, do you want to move it forward as a recommendation for high density residential or not?
I'm okay with that. I for Cal.
Bye, I'm okay with that as well.
I agree.
You said high density, right, Heather?
That was their application, yes.
Okay.
And just as a history, Mark and Cal were here, but it did not get a recommendation of approval. Um, back in in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen from the city council. They actually remanded it back to the planning commission. Because of concerns about the um density and and in that case. They had suggested, the council suggested things like putting a density limit um on the property. So that's where they they've been working. As the council tribe has been working on. A development agreement that potentially would try and satisfy the concerns of the planning commission and the city council from that time. So it's not approved. And it has has been remanded back to the planning commission. But. Um, this comp plan designation would be something that would be needed to to go with a potential rezone.
But based on what's happened over the years, the situation now is changed compared to what their original application was. So just want everybody to know that.
So what what is the consensus of the planning commission?
I, we are, we all agreed to that, correct?
Correct.
Anybody object?
No.
Yeah, we all agree.
Yeah. All right, have I missed anything on the map? Oh, the high density residential, okay, so in the downtown plan, it was adopted. As a recommendation to go to high density residential north of the proposed downtown area. And and can you zoom that in, please, Zach, so they can see where it. It's located. Right. Um.
About eleven acres there.
Yes, about eleven acres. Um, does the planning commission wanna move that forward in the comp plan?
I'm okay with that. I for Cal.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Mark? Majority three two. Just kidding.
Okay.
That's an I.
Well, congratulations. You've you've recommended a preferred alternative.
There you go, there you go. We got up here.
Oh, that's part of the B properties.
Oh, is it? Okay.
That's part of the.
Let's get a check part two.
And then the little B four, that's all part of the Hunter's Crossing. Comp plan.
That's right.
Changed last year. All right, anything, anything we missed? Okay.
We now all have agreed on F two and all the zoning. Except uh F one, correct?
Um, I I think that.
Only only zoning was F one that we said that leave it alone. And the swap, we agreed on F two as a group and that's it. Those are the two main.
Can you zoom back in, Zach? I'm sorry, it's it's such a small one, I can't see it anymore. Okay. Um, so just to note, so I wanted to be sure, go through all the chats um before we had a final. Final, final. Let's see, um. So it, there was a comment from Elizabeth Tolison about, I think Darla, I think her last name was Nelson's. Um, interest in remaining in the U G A, which is already identified as number as item A. Um. But you did remove for other property concern F one. Um, Judy Kowalski asked to show the J Los contours and and the city of Airway Heights, those contours, we had. The city of Airway Heights, um which we also called J Los on contours, which we showed on the ladies map. Um, there's a second comment that uh Jamie made, which was concerning E um. She was concerned that E is in a sound contour. Um. So we checked that real quick. And I, Zach, are you still there?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, let me pull the map up real quick. And the the answer is yes, it is in the sound contour, just so we're all clear, but this was the. This was an application from the Kalispel tribes, and this was done in twenty eighteen. So this wasn't a proposal for us.
So um it sounds as if he is in the sound contour, um is the sixty five to sixty nine?
Yeah, so the uh southeastern half is in the sixty five to sixty three, right here.
Not all of the property, okay. Um, does that impact the planning commission's recommendation on E that part of it's in an area that has to demonstrate community need for residential?
How does that affect though? If it's in the contour just for. So we all understand.
It tr- it just triggers additional review to determine whether or not it's appropriate for it to have residential. And that, that was, that's something that still can be um discussed as part of their ongoing application process. Cause remember, they have to come back to the planning commission and the city council with their proposal.
Okay. No, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm still okay with this decision.
Since it's gonna come back and we still have an opportunity to relook at it, so. I'm sorry I cut you, Mark.
Oh, no worries, Cal.
Okay. Um, let's see, and then there was a comment from Jack Costello, and this was regarding um. Jay, that um he felt it was premature to make a final decision at this point. And what capacity does Airway have to serve any of these areas?
I mean, when we're looking at a twenty year situation. You know, I guess uh most people would think like, how do you know? We don't, we don't know, honestly. Like, we're trying to make the best decision that we can now, so.
Okay. Well, I I think everyone's done a great job tonight, and thank you for struggling through all of this. So um what, so we have it on the map. That Zach just popped in. Um, a consensus on what is in your preferred alternative. So could I have a vote from the planning commission that what was on the map represented your preferred alternative?
I would like to make a motion to vote of the map that we just adopted as our alternative.
Wants to second it?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds, all in favor?
I.
We have a majority.
Awesome, thank you. Well, that concludes that um process. So just to give you some next steps, we'll take this preferred alternative with the information that you received, the letter. And we will um take that to the city council for a study session. Um, and get their feedback as well and. The next step will be to take that preferred alternative and study it. So I'm kind of getting back to Jack Costello's question of. Um, do we have the ability to serve? That was the intent of being this map, is we can give it to our citizens and say, what would it take? If we had. Um. This area residential or this area becomes part of the city at an urban density of ten eight units per acre. What would it take in order to provide water, search, transportation, et cetera? And and the the result of that. Will help guide, um can we afford? To serve these areas? Do we need to come back and change this map um so that we can? Kind of tighten what our expectations of what we need, what we can serve and and ultimately those. Uh, reports of our needs for the next six years and twenty years to provide. Services will be all part of a plan that we give back to the planning commission and we'll. Begin working those chapters with you over several meetings. And in order to meet that. That goal, we may be asking the planning commission if you're willing to meet more frequently than months and months, so we can get through that material. But those will be the next steps. And we will uh confirm with the planning commission, when we're gonna workshop your recommended alternative with the council. So you can be present. Um, if we end up with a corner, let you know, let us know so we can advertise it. As a, as a meeting of the two bodies, but I'm trying to make sure everybody's uh keeping up to date on those those next steps and process. Any questions?
Heather, are you gonna move this forward under this uh preferred alternative or are we calling this alternative four?
Uh, we'll, we'll just call it the um.
Good work, everybody. Thank you for support.
Oh, thank you so much um for your patience, everyone. Great questions and we'll work. Um, a lot more in trying to make sure materials are easier to review and and make recommendations on as well.
All right, I like to, I, staff's been busy, but they still have more work. Thank you, everybody. Uh, like to move to the workshop, uh two thousand twenty two comprehensive plan.
Uh, so this is just to bring you back the results of the transportation survey. So we wanted to know more from our community about what they thought. About walking, biking and safety on our roads, or we might need to make improvements, what were common destinations. Of the public throughout our community. And um. May have to find that because I have to pull up the documents up right now. Um, do you have it up, Zach?
Yeah, just one second.
Perfect. Awesome. Uh, so this survey was open for over a month. About the end of December, all the way through the beginning of February. And we did use social media as well as the email system we have to go out to utility. Account holders, people with business licenses, people who are members of the gym, basically when he's provided us an email. Um, address and so that mail chimp distribution list is well over four thousand people. That it goes out to the lower community of, you know, ten thousand five hundred. So it's a pretty good email list. Uh, that we use to communicate outward um about these projects. And so we're just gonna kind of go through some of these um responses to you. Um, you'll begin to see that there are a lot of common themes. Um, we, we found that. Walk very often in our community, so they walk less than once a week and they probably bike. Once or less times um during the week. And so one of the things we consider when we see really low road, low rates of usage of, let's say, biking and walking is. Um, is there something about our community that makes it so people don't want to walk, bike and walk? You know, is it an access issue? Um, so we'll look further at the materials to kind of delve into maybe what some of those might be. Uh, we also got information about when they do bike with the routes that people use most often. If you can just scroll down a little bit. Zach. Um, so there's no, no mystery there. Molly Mitchell, Craig, Dave Bernardino. Um, Russell, Spray, um. You know, quite a few uh roadways that we see that people often bike now. Um, these are also areas close to residential or along our separated bike and walk path, as I would call. Um, and we can go back, but it might be easy just to go from right to left since the questions are not in order on here. They're kind of. Conglomerated. Zach, can you go up just a little bit? Uh, what routes do you use? Uh, no mystery, most of these are residential areas. Uh, again, we see Sixth Avenue, Russell, Garfield, Eighteenth. Aspen, um Sixth and Campbell, Russell. So a lot of places again where. Where we have residential areas where people are are taking a path adjacent to where getting to an arterial or somewhere in the vicinity. Of the separated walk and bike path. Um, let's see. We were asking a question about destinations and unfortunately, something happened with the survey. And ninety percent of people said that they bike somewhere else or walk somewhere else than these major features. So unfortunately, we didn't get a chance for them to fill in the answers, say where they're going. So most people bike and walk somewhere, but it's not, it's more often than the grocery store, restaurants, the rec center. Or professional services. So that was, that was a bit of a problem with the survey. Uh, we found that uh those people who have students, most of them don't walk or bike. Which I think is really interesting, because the school district is intentionally separated bus routing. So if you're north of US two, then you're supposed to be able to walk or bike. And if you're south of US two, you get bused. Um, so it's, it's super interesting that so few people have students are walking, biking in our community. So again, we have to think about what kind of gaps might there be that make it um seem like it's not feasible for students to walk and bike. Um, are there problems along these routes, um safe walking areas? Lack of sidewalk? Um, safe walking areas, lack of sidewalk, um, wide shoulders, some complaints about individuals and their properties. We have heard a little bit about uh, Sixth Avenue and King previously, when we did the demonstration project last, this last year, that. There was a concern of lack of sidewalks there. Uh, we have heard over and over again, you know, the need to have a link of sidewalks, I think, pretty consistently in the survey. Uh, we asked where sidewalks should be extended and filled in, uh, there's lots of ideas here, uh, Lawson and Sixth. At Sunset Park, the north end of Heford, Dean and Craig. Um, Sixth Avenue then comes over and over and is maybe more, Eighth Tenth. It's easy, Beaman, in the south of um, the highway. Um, I will say that when you go to look at a sidewalk map, which Zach just recently finished this summer, so we have a complete map of where our gaps and sidewalk are. We find that the new developments have sidewalks because they were required to. But virtually every part of the older part of Airway Heights does not have sidewalks, so when we think about, you know, kind of the center of our. Core residential area as well as the trailer park south of US two. We see big gaps, and interestingly, um, these are primary walking routes potentially to get to Sunset Park instead of the tree. So this was a great job that Zach did to do this for us, and this will help us along with the stick of survey. To start building a map from transportation chapter about priority sidewalk gap. Areas that we need to fill in, so that when we go after Monday, we can say, we've looked at this, this is our community's priorities. This is how we're gonna try to fill in those sidewalks. Uh, we heard throughout our engagement process. About lack of access to the, to the recreation center, the committee center that's up on Dino Road, and so we put a question in here saying. Here are some alternatives the city's looked at or may consider, what do you think is the best alternative we should consider, and that included. Going along Heford Road, extending Russell, which would actually go through the mining operation, just off of the property that you recommended be rezoned. Uh, through the Raceway Park. Uh, or was there another suggestion, and unfortunately, again, the survey didn't allow them to fill in the other suggestions, so. Um, overwhelmingly, their recommendation was to go through the Raceway Park. And we have uh, had a discussion with the Kalispel tribe, they're also interested potentially in having a pathway through. The uh, former Spokane County Raceway Park to access the rec center, so we will see if, if that's something that we'll be able to. Accommodate and, and put in as part of a planning of forward. Certainly a strategy. Let's see, uh, there's a question about bike lanes in the roadway, so if we've ever talked about complete streets previously, the idea is. A roadway isn't just for vehicles, it has amenities for bikers and walkers too, and. And you have to think about each roadway, what works best, you put all those facilities in, or only some, so we've asked the question about bike lanes. And how people in our community prefer for them to be integrated throughout our transportation system, and, and transportation isn't just cars, it's just how you get around. And overwhelmingly, um, we saw that people prefer the multi-use pathway similar to along US two. Or that's along Russell and Sprague. Um, but they very much like the idea that at least they're separate, that you're not putting bike lanes in the street, so that's an important piece of information. We also asked where we should extend the multi-use pathway system, like we have along Sprague, that it comes down Russell to Garfield, and comes along US two. And um, we've had a couple suggestions there, um. Going all the way outside the city to Riverside State Parks, lets out Heford Road, that Dino and Craig Road should be included in that. Um, Lawson Street from Sixth to Highway Two, along the full length of Sixth Avenue, which by the way, is part. Of the Sixteenth, Twelfth proposal that, that came out clearly in the community survey that was done. Uh, last year, and so that is actually going to be implemented on Sixth, so it will have a separated walk. Uh, let's see, I think, um, we also asked some questions about transit. How often do people use it? Less than one time a week overwhelmingly. Again, we ask, is there a impediment to result in this question, and the answer is probably transit. Is not uh, high performance, it's not coming frequently, it's only coming down Sixth Avenue, we'll pass Russell. So it's not getting to the corner of residential areas, but thanks to the gracious uh. This of the board for Spokane Transit Authority, we just received a two million dollar grant. Uh, and we will be finishing Sixth Avenue all the way to Craig Road, and that will enable transit to come all the way down Sixth Avenue, and so we will be able to have transit there. Uh, where transit stops needed, there's our recommendations for Sixth and Aspen. Uh, Lawson and Aspen on Sixth Avenue, and so again, the common theme along Sixth Avenue, which is no. No mystery, but almost all residential areas are within two, three blocks of Sixth Avenue. Uh, Flint and Twelve came out as a recommendation as well. Uh, safety came up, so we were asking about stop signs or lights, uh, recommendation was for Lawson and Highway Two. Uh, where there's too long of a wait, Flint and Highway Two, um. Heford and Highway Two, Hamilton Campbell, um, some of the recommendations. Uh, what were some of the challenges people identified in Airway Heights? Pedestrian safety was, was high, ranked over fifty percent. Um, we also heard that pedestrian safety are heavily speeding and congestion were significant issues. And by the way, we've asked the consultant if there are actually eight more answers to these, where, and others please specify, we just didn't get them in the results, but. Hopefully, there is more information about where there are other uh, transportation challenges, so we can help feed these to our transportation consultant. Uh, and, and the end was uh, how we fix these problems and challenges, and what are your recommendations as the community about how to do that? Um. Extending Sixth Avenue to Craig Road and all the way to Flint. Let's see. Um, having bike and pedestrian trails on Sixth Avenue. Uh, building a bypass across US two, adding sidewalks and bike lanes, extending bus service. Uh, realigning, redesigning Sixth Avenue to work with transit. Um, pedestrian crossings across from Heford, from Cedar Apartments to Copper Landing, and to make those safer. Uh, roundabouts, there was a response that roundabouts weren't an appropriate tool. Uh, more multi-use pathways. Uh, a light, another light at Rambo, so those are some of the suggestions we've received, and uh, this was their priority. Which was more pedestrian facilities, followed by um, addressing uh, vehicle issues. Uh, including reducing speed, uh, increasing accessibility throughout the community. So um, that was the results of the transportation survey, we're, we're giving this information to TO Engineering, which is preparing the transportation chapter. And we've asked them to use this information to help guide things like. Uh, what are the priorities for filling sidewalk gaps, which you just mentioned, where are some of the destinations where we need to think about putting in crossings? Uh, crossroads, so people can get through, you know, how to extend our separated bike and path. We network moving forward, so. This was a great opportunity to hear from our community about what they thought that issues were, and give us some feedback, and then directly integrate that into our planning. Were there any questions about the survey or some of the responses, and um, I think Zach, have we forwarded this to the planning commissioner already?
We have not, but we can do that after the meeting.
Absolutely, we'll forward that, so you, so you can take a little bit more time to kind of read through the responses.
It's good data.
Heather, I have a question, um, just for my own clarification. If a member of the public has a concern about a particular crosswalk, or, you know, crossing a street. Is the planning commission the, the right place for them to, to go?
I would say if, if they have an immediate issue on a safety. Or a maintenance issue.
Yeah.
That they should contact the Public Works Department. But if there was something where, just. Like we've talked about here, where something we should consider for planning for transportation improvements. Um, all of this is going to go into what's called a six-year transportation improvement plan. As well as a twenty-year plan, so it's gonna identify things that we could afford to do. Um, in these areas over the short term, and then long term, how do we go about addressing these needs? And that helps us by hearing those concerns and getting them into a plan.
What precipitated that question was, I heard from a member of the public that lives over in these summit apartments along. Heford Road. He expressed a lot of concern for pedestrian safety, uh. Going across, you know, that crosswalk from. Uh, Heford Road to Ninth Street by those apartments. Because in our heavy fog, especially, the pedestrians sort of disappear. And I'm wondering if that's a particular site that, that might be a consideration for those. You know, in pavement crosswalk lights, you know what I mean?
Actually, that project is already um, a project that's being designed, and.
Oh, it is, okay.
And it's going to be installed at Ninth Avenue, um. There's been some discussion around the design and the bidding for that, but I, I believe that's a project that's gonna go in in twenty twenty-two. Um, we'll double check with Kevin Anderson, the Public Works Director, but I, I believe that is. Now, I'm not positive what kind of feature is, I can't tell you. It's a rectangular rapid flash, or.
Sure.
You know, or what specifically that design is.
Okay, I, I wasn't aware of that, that a plan was in place for that, but that's great, thank you.
Um, Zach's got something up right here, it looks like they posted it on the city's Facebook page, so a new pedestrian actuated, which means. A pedestrian. Flashing beacon crossing is planned at Ninth and Heford, and is funded, the design is complete, the equipment is ordered. A bin package for construction is being prepared. So, yeah, it'll go in this year.
Sweet, okay. Thank you for that.
Well, thanks, Zach, he's the one that's been coming through. Um, so that just is the summary, we wanted to swing back around and give you the results of our publicly engagement activity around transportation. And let you know that that's being provided to our consultants, and we look forward to. Maps and uh, updated capital planning around transportation as a result of that.
Thank you, Heather, good data.
Absolutely, um, so again, to be um, repeating myself. Uh, the next thing you'll see is a draft transportation element that incorporates this information, and some recommendations and some maps that. Will help guide us as we move forward.
Anything else? Before I cut you off?
No, thank you very much for all of the time this, tonight, we anticipated it was gonna take quite a while for me, so I apologize for. For such a long evening, thank you for hanging in there, I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
They have dinner waiting.
Uh, if you don't have anything further, I will open up commissioners' reports, if anybody has anything. Any commissioners? No?
No.
You look tired, okay, we're gonna close that, we're gonna open up the staff reports, if we have anything from the staff.
Zach, do you wanna go first?
Uh, yeah, uh.
So you were tired?
Brief as possible for. Uh, we are going to be bringing, I believe I mentioned this last month, but we're bringing a uh, public hearing to you guys next month. Uh, it will be on a proposal that will change our fence ordinance to allow for some specific types of electrical fences. So uh, that is on the books for, I believe it's March sixth or ninth, or somewhere in there, that, that, the March meeting. Um, so we'll get you the information on that as soon as it becomes available. Uh, I will be at city council on Monday to present our proposal for a new website. Uh, hosting, a new logo, some photography, and just overall branding for the city. Uh, we will be doing an RFP, which is a request for proposals, uh, through that process, we will be developing a committee. Of different representatives, uh, to help us select a vendor, uh, some of you have been involved in those processes before. Uh, but I believe we will probably come to the planning commission with that, um, so I will reach out to you guys, or we'll talk about it again in March. About selecting a representative for the planning commission, um. The, we, I think we talked about it last month, but the ARCS commission is now up. For uh, the selection of individuals to join it, uh, and we're about to finish up that art grant by the end of uh, March, I believe. So we'll be trying to get some money to get a speaker to come in, uh, to speak to the new commission. Um, I am currently working on developing a comprehensive history of our uh, jails adoption process. Uh, Heather mentioned earlier in the uh, in tonight's meeting that she's going to be presenting to city council on J List, and, and. And part of that for us is going through and, and really digging into the history, because it's very. Uh, nuanced and very complicated, uh, so that is uh, taking up a large portion of my day. Uh, right now, but uh, hopefully we'll have a better understanding of what happened, and we can, you know, get on the same page with Fairchild. In terms of, you know, the different uh, sound contours and whatnot, so, uh, we are working on that, just because it, it's something that comes up from time to, time to time, so. Uh, other than that, uh, we have a couple current projects, we're working on all sorts of stuff, we just got a uh. A final plat submission for Traditions West, which is a uh, thirty-eight lot subdivision. Uh, north of Sixth Avenue, sorry, I'm looking at my map, I'm not ignoring you guys. Uh, Sixth Avenue over there by Molly Mitchell, uh, so yeah, we're, we're busy doing stuff like that, so. Anywho, that, that's kind of what I'm, I got going on, Heather, I'll let you uh, let you speak.
Thank you. Um, well, of course. We've been looking at a variety of grant opportunities to help us develop roads, um, as you may know, you know, most of the. The cost of developing a roadway is oriented by the development adjacent to it, when they. Go forward with construction, or it's based on grant dollars that we get at um. Local, state, or federal level, and so we have been actively looking at and applying for grants for a variety of projects, but. The STA grant that we received to finish Sixth Avenue is, is just one example of that, we'll be. Looking at uh, some other grants to potentially help us continue to build out Sixth Avenue. Um, that first phase, of course, did get a transportation improvement benefit. Grant, so that would be completed probably next year between Heford. And Garfield Road, uh, will be able to do the work, basically. A lot of the work uh, at the end of Sixth, between White and Craig, and then we'll be looking for grant opportunities. Uh, through the remainder of the area. Uh, one of the things that I did want to just briefly mention to the planning commission, uh, in case you become aware of it. Or you ask questions about it, but the city did adopt a water concurrency ordinance this week. Uh, water concurrency is kind of similar to transportation concurrency, so it's a review of development. To uh, see how much demand that it will have on the water system. And to assign uh, water to that project, so it'll be a water availability certificate. Uh, that goes with single-family building permits, and they have a life, so the idea is, is that someone gets their permit, they build their home. And as long as they build their home, then the certificate is still valid, and if for some reason, um. But they don't move forward with it, then that, that certificate comes back into the pool, um, quote unquote of water that's available. Uh, we are doing this because um, we are on water from the city of Spokane after the PFAS and KFO contamination. And we are actively, have actively been pursuing alternatives for permanent water source. For Airway Heights down in the Spokane Valley. Uh, Rathrum Aquifer, in the interim, we've been purchasing water through the city of. Uh, Spokane, and uh, because we're only given a certain amount of that water, we're. We're tracking it and giving water certificates as a result of that, so. Um, just wanted to let you know about that, in case you saw something in the paper, or uh, heard more about it, that you're aware of it. And if you have more questions, we can certainly brief you next month. I also wanted to mention, it's a possibility that the Kalispel Tribe will be bringing that development agreement. That I mentioned for that rezone over Garfield in March. They've been working on that for all over a year. And they're interested to present that to the planning commission and then go to the city council to see if they can. Get a recommendation from the, from the city to allow that rezone. As we discussed today, there. Are potentially some challenges still associated with that proposal from the original concerns. From the planning commission and the city council to those that were mentioned this evening by Jamie Kowalski with Fairchild Air Force Base about. You know, part of the property laying within a sound contour, which refers to a demonstration of community need. For allowing housing and being designated as mixed use. So probably those are the the big items that we're working on and. A lot more coming up in the next couple of months, but thank you very much for everybody's time this evening. And again, I very, very much appreciate. Your dedication and volunteering and really thoughtful discussion about. Looking at how we're going to address the growth in the city.
Thank you for putting up with us tonight, Heather.
No, no worries. I love working with you. Miss Stephanie. Very much so. So we'll continue to work on that and then I see that Darla is still on. If she can reach out to planninginfo@cawh.org or call the main planning. Number two four four two five five two, I would be happy to set the time, work with her to get those documents and kind of go through the history of the safety conference and planning process.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for giving us your time tonight. I know it was a long meeting. But I think we accomplished a lot and stuff. Thank you very much. Seeing nice work coming out of your department, technology is now being implemented in the city. So if there's no further questions or discussions, I would like to adjourn the meeting at nine oh three. So we've been on the meeting three hours, guys.
Nice.
Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Are you back east? Are you, are you in the east coast right now?
No, I'm in Arizona, it's ten oh three here.
Okay, just making sure. You said you were out at a different time zone, I was like, oh no.
I was, that's why earlier I screwed up. I was an hour away, so I made sure I looked at it twice now. I didn't want to ask Hank again. All right, good night, guys. Thank you, everybody.